The. Agenda for this meeting, are there going to be comments or amendments? If not, motion to accept the agenda.
Motion.
If motion, so if you have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor, aye, opposed, okay. Minutes. From the meeting. Any comments?
Well, I made the motion to accept the minutes as presented. I made a motion.
Really made the minutes, yeah.
I know it's your birthday, but don't overdo it. I said it's your birthday, don't overdo it. I made a.
So. A motion for seven minutes, we have a second, or a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor, aye, opposed, okay.
Why have to be defined?
The personal care facility. Would you like to give a. Some of the issues, then?
Sure, yeah, like there's a sub-assembly review again and. It's a big progress, you know what you're looking to do personally or would you see it at all?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, um. I was here last month, my name is Chris White with Level Landscoring. And Don, I'm the main, um, representing the applicants here tonight, and I think we have some of Gerald Dean's on the phone. Um, it looks like my easel broke, but. I'll hold it up if I need to, right?
I got another one over here.
Looks like. I was looking over, but I thought it fell off. Great, never mind.
He's, he knows his easels.
Alright, so there were, there were many, um, fellowship last month, and we had kind of did introduction for the project, we talked about it. And since then, um, we did receive vendor review, and I can give you an update on, um. Some of the outside agencies, unfortunately, I don't have much of an update on theirs. Um, PennDOT still hasn't responded to our request for a meeting. So the attorney, Jim Breger, um, working with us, reached out to Rosemary Brown's office to try to get them to kind of push things along. So I know he's talked to some people there, so hopefully next time you see us, we'll have some resolution for that. And other than that, I was gonna just, you know, we got the letter, um, most of it is will comply or just, or notes and, you know, pretty straightforward items. There were a couple I did want to talk about because kind of, um, will impact how we move forward with some of the designs and, um. So I, unless you want me to go through all the comments or talk about the things.
Right, well, let's, let's keep talking about it.
Cause I think our, okay, yeah, our ten percent is not that, or, you know, there's, there's a lot of comments here, plus we had a PennDOT and Stream Cross, there's a lot of things out there. That we would have to be tabled in the long run, but I think some of the waiver requests, we would like to at least talk about, um, just to get some feedback from, from everyone. So, I'll just, I'll just go on a couple of things we're talking about. Um, comments nine and 10 from zoning, um, we were proposing the, there's an existing gravel driveway out there right now. Existing gravel driveway, um, and we know there's the situation out with PennDOT and Coenine. We'll get that resolved with PennDOT to find out, you know, whether they're gonna approve. You know, right now, we have a defense that goes out there, which really isn't the best spot for it, and we're gonna try to work that out. So I know this is moving in overnight, um, but the, the main question that I have related to gravel, once you get it passed down there to the gas station. There's an existing driveway down at existing gravel driveway, bearing width, um, it's twelve feet, fifteen feet, somewhere in there, um, and stone. And our plan is to propose to line it in a certain area, provide passing areas, um, to keep it as stone. Um, there, you know, a, a big reason this is, um, is concerned with the, the cost, um, both with the paving and then also moving into it later later with the width of the road. Um, when I, I put this together, it's all low dust materials, and that was kind of, it was, in the zoning word, it's, that was kind of our thought, we put the gravel down, it would be a low dust material. And then comment, I think there were a couple of comments related to that, I think, um, you point out could be a conditional use.
Yeah, it is, yeah, in the ways where it's have, um, subsection forty two basically says. Except for landscape area, all portions that require parking, the water, the service and driveway, some surface with asphalt, concrete, paving block, or other low dust materials approved. Pre-approved by township. Uh, we had a sort of a conditional use condition that spoke to, kind of emphasizing the need for that. The very next, so subsection forty three said by conditional use, supportive supervisor may allow parking area to blow or please on use to be named in stone, grass, or other suitable surfaces. It seems to be excluding, it technically excludes stone from low dust, um, materials. It's one of those things where depending on the stone you're going with, you know, if you're going with a clean stone, it's larger, without vines in it, and it's thick enough depth. It's gonna affect its function like a low dust, if that being said, there's some interpretation there, and. At least for me, cause I violated these as well, I, I think the access is really the biggest, I agree, the biggest hurdle with this. You know, you have two private, uh, you know, other parties, you know, properties you're crossing, and you've easements across and, and out. Uh, and then you're kind of constrained by the twenty foot wide existing easement. At least for me. Um, and if you put our recommendations of having at least twenty feet wide, it's consistent with a one-way, with, you know, for township standards, it's consistent with a low-volume driveway with PennDOT standard. It's something I feel like I could hang my hat along with, off of what, traffic, or, or traffic department, off of what the twenty foot width. Um, going less than that, I, I would really, first, I would like some buy-in from, you know, Bushkill, fire department, that. That access would be suitable for that, I, I would be hesitant to. Create something narrower than that without them having comfortability getting to and from the site, if that makes sense.
So, so if, if there were ever an issue, it wouldn't come back and say, why don't you focus, no, it's, we can't get our equipment back there, you can't.
Well, it's just, you know, it's just kind of going off of. Different standards, and I, I guess, kind of, it's unique property, it's a unique service that they find themselves in, and I know there's a cost associated with it. But, uh, and, and, and I'm assuming probably supervisors, or twenty-three, three guys, probably the same vote, but. They're, we're not the ones that are driving out there, that are getting access, right, it's, you know, emergency response to the largest vehicles that are going out there. They need to get there, they need to. And, you know, having their comfortability with doing so, I think, is a necessary prerequisite to, you know, to bring anything smaller in and stuff. You can speak about comfort, you know, as far as servicing goes to, uh, I don't know what their thoughts are on it, uh. We need to figure out, if we're going with stone, does it really, we need a conditional use, uh, for the ordinance.
It is a cost to do it, but you can scrape it clean in the winter time, and it melts off and whatever, otherwise you gravel roads, you get ice on it. And I'm, I'm thinking about emergency, but that's really what it is after, like the access to come in on, an icy, that snow-covered road.
We do provide a fire truck, I mean, a fire truck does have a lot of the exact respect, we do provide the, the truck turning to that, and that would be the largest vehicles, because they're not gonna be getting. Large deliveries or anything like that, but surely the fire truck would be, that's a critical path, I think.
Um, would, would you let us take a look at that road, can we drive that road back?
Drive that road back, I'll find out, I, I, I did it earlier.
I can only do this myself, but I do want to go back there by myself.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of the things where, and if you look, I came back and looked at the dimensions, it is narrower as you get closer to like the gas station area, I think it says like ten and a half feet to one length. It feels narrower in that portion, it doesn't widen once you get closer to the wetlands, you're kind of making that bend. But there are, there are areas too where it currently falls outside. Existing easement, right, so I don't know, is the plan to root gravel there and, uh, or adjust it, or are you adjusting the easement?
I think the plans would be to adjust the easement because where the driveway is now makes the most sense, because, um. Stay around around this corner in particular, there is a, a big, it's like a hill way here, so it slopes down. Slops all the way to the road, and then you have about fifteen feet or so, and then the other side, and then it slopes right down into the wetlands, so it is very narrow, so. What's why in a lot of these areas, um, it makes sense to, to adjust the easement. Now, if we're gonna have to do twenty feet through that field, you know, additional work moving, we'd have to widen the road, um, remove some trees, um, and so for the wetlands, um. You know, we, we could physically do that, we just might get a little bit closer, um. So.
But how, you know, how would you adjust the, the usement then, I mean, you have to go back and, and file a new.
Where I work with the property owner, yeah, come to an agreement. I'm gonna put down to just draft a new easement and modify the existing one.
Any conversation yet or not, can?
I've been, had a number of conversations with them, I mean, they feel comfortable that the property owner worked with them. And then we're, you know, talking about this, it's, it's related to the waiver request I said, I sent earlier, just, um, you know, the driveway considering it, it had a local access tree. Which, you know, read the orders, I, I agree with that, that's my interpretation also, um. But, but local access, we consider up to a hundred and twenty-five residential units, and this is just thirteen, you know, this. This house here, this is gonna have, I think, six beds now, right? Six beds, and the people that work there, so when we looked at it, you know, as the traffic analysis, it's, it's kind of, you, it's uncommon here, excuse me, like the nursing home, the nursing homes are a lot bigger. We're kind of just breaking that back down, I think it was thirty some, thirty-six trips a day.
Have you taken into consideration that the patients will have visitors coming in and out?
Uh, that's taking into consideration with that account, yeah. Yeah, so I know the people that are gonna be staying there, it's hard, you know, the rooms aren't gonna be driving, but you want me to have visitors and doctors and the people that work there, you know, because they're gonna have people there full-time. But there is gonna be some traffic, but it's not, not gonna be law or store or anything like that, um, it's not part of our consideration on the waiver request. And I think those are really the, the two big items, trying to, everything else is pretty easy, you know, there, there's all the house, I know there was a technical comment, it's all, um, you know, I know we agreed with. Putting in lights for safety for both the parking area and then, you know, coming down to the driveway too, so people can see as well. Um, it's really, you know, determining, um, you know, having the twenty foot width and the waiver for a local access tree, because I think even that talked about having a fifty foot right of way. Or like which, which parts, because that, that creates, you know, the fifty foot right of way, you don't really have the opportunity to do anything like that.
Yeah, it is, it is tough, and like the way, the way the style though, is written, it's almost like there's kind of a void. For the, like, it, it jumps from private access trees, which is really intended to third, like, single-family, maybe two, like, two single-family dwellings. Like, it's intended to make the cross of the properties to get to your primary residence, whatever, which is something like, and that's essentially what this was prior to the.
Right.
That's, that's how this went in, appropriate for that, it's just that now it's shifting to a non-residential use. Higher trip counts, but, like you're saying, the next one up is this local access tree, which. A, a, and some sections, this agrees, kind of clearly, like, it seems like it applies, then others, it seems like it's intended really for, um, larger use than, so. Do I get, do I think a fifty foot right of way is a verb rehere, I personally don't think, I think that's excessive, I, but, I do think we need to get, I think we need to get the cartway width. Figured out, and we need to have buy-in from local emergency officials, that they're comfortable with it. Before I'd be comfortable on, you know, conceding on that person.
And, and the intention was to pay just one ADA space, that's what.
Yeah, I think one of the Ben rubs was putting a two weeks, it's a factor instead of just one, just for one, it's a business.
The one's technically compliant, um, I guess, I was talking with our traffic group, and I guess when you get into healthcare, they tend to have, recommend higher ratios than, where you have part of the dollars, given. People are being period of survey, so, uh, sometimes it'll be, you know, like you'll see out in front of hospitals, it's like, there's just a higher density of ADA accessible spaces given. I think so, that was all it was, it was, it's the way there was space to convert the other lines to other ADA, so it started being, but it was just a recommendation, you don't really have to do it, but it was a recommendation.
No, if we saw that, I think it makes sense, I think it's, that's not a problem. Okay, so I would ask that you give a full Marshall Creek fire department. On Bush. These Marshall Creek, but.
Yeah.
Kind of saying, but, but pushing it all, pushing it more.
Yeah.
But I would still ask the Marshall Creek fire department, take a look at it, we typically do that, on all hands, that even. And then Bushville.
If you can get like some sort of recourse, like from a letter, email, something just, there, probably, hey, plan looks great, both put it in the site, we're comfortable with it, in its current condition. May, makes it easier conversation here, uh.
So, uh, Deb, do you have anything on that picture?
I mean, I, the, the width I was, was for the engineer. Um, and I agree with his interpretation also regarding the, so, I mean, the, the, the second line is maybe doesn't make it appear that you need a conditional use to be able to use the stone. But that wasn't considered a little dust material, or else the second part wouldn't have been part of it.
Yeah, so I, I think, I, I would say, when you're reaching out to Marshall Creek and Bushville, or, I, I, I think that would be the second part, I, I think, thought that off, with, and then. You know, it, it, it's also, it's, it's pretty well-wooded back there, just making sure from a visibility, you know, if they're going out, one AM, my wife's, uh. Uh, she wanted EMS locally, so, you know, she bonded sites overnight and everything, so it's just, you know, worst time of day, visibility, are they comfortable getting back here when they're needed to? Uh, and then surface material, if, if you were to go with like a clean stone, that's what you want to do, let's just make sure they're comfortable with it being a local access competitive. If they're comfortable with it, maybe it makes it easier when going forward for supervisors to make that around. I don't know, I mean, but, I don't know what your concept.
Well, one, one B or two B on there, and go through the first winner, and it's all upside, I mean, it's just, it's not that bad, I'm gonna hold it up. There's one A. But, I mean, it, again, it's. Service would be a lot better if. More secret. I mean, I know. Even if it's conditioned in the future, they're just concerned about the upfront costs to do this, but it's before they can move now, and that's, that. It's a long drive, like, I mean. It is, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna ride it. Maybe get more comfortable if I can drive it back and see. But, yeah, does make you comfortable to get ahead from a, a plan perspective right now, so. Right, yeah, yeah, and like, and so we, you know, offer a widen, maybe we, we see what else we can do, so maybe widen, and a lot of other areas, it does get. Cause then, in this first section, you have to be able to let in there, it's both sides, and it is firm enough in between, that would be the trickiest area to actually widen, because that would encroach into the wetland areas.
Uh, so. We're thinking we need a waiver, right?
Yes.
For timelines.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I talked to the board, but I don't think that we're gonna pass this on tonight.
Oh, did you have anything, or, things you wanted to talk for, because I think you had the offer modification as well, right? Cause I don't think we really talked about that.
We did.
We talked about that last month, and.
I think we might have just mentioned that we were asking for that. And that is based on this, I think, like, neuro-wetlands, um, you know, bringing the vicinity of, of everything here. Um, so even though we're not really doing too much, you know, um, we're still, anything we do in this roadway is gonna be within that bumper of wetlands, so they're asking for a bumper from, from the wetland setbacks. Last two requests was, that was the one request we submitted, and then, um, we were gonna ask for a local access, but we're not looking necessarily at anything voted on tonight. We're gonna, we'll be back, and, and we'll be tabled, if you wanted to bring this up for discussion, you get feedback, help us, help us get some direction on.
Yeah, and, and this is one of the one thing, you know, you out there, you drive, and, you know, my interpretation out there, there's pretty steep grades on the north-west side of that drive, like. Coming into the site where it's, you know, there really isn't an alternative route, or, you know what I mean, anything that you're really aware of, it's. Existing access that's there, you're not really expanding it considerably, there's really not a choice to have a middle, that, you know, I, I think that's a fair modification.
Okay. Is it building served by any sprinkler system?
I think it. I didn't, you know, if it's a, like, sprinklers, it's. It would have to be any of the current codes, I'm sure it wasn't before, you know.
Whatever the private home, then.
Whatever the private, I'm sure it wasn't, so.
I can only say, um, my husband had a heart attack a year ago in the way my driveway is made. They, uh, and it needed two ambulances, so the Bushkill had to move to a wider space in my community, so that the suburban, or my husband. Because my record goes up like that, and I'm inside of a community, so, uh, those are concerns if they need more than one service to maintain a life, and they can't get in.
I know, I know. Yeah, we are, yeah, that wouldn't be our, our, you know, we wouldn't be doing anything like that, once you get.
You can't say we wouldn't be doing anything, a person could easily go into distress, need to, services in order to maintain them.
But if you, you're, like, once you get up to this facility, there is a lot of room for, you know, there's a lot of.
If they can get there, I'm concerned because I know that I've experienced this a year ago, and I have a great, beautiful home, but there was not enough space. My driveway going up, or two am, ambulances.
To pass.
To pass or to work, because once they opened the car, they were right on the edge of my clips.
I'm gonna take a look.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, sometimes. Okay, so, um. I'm not comfortable with the modification at this point, but it's no, okay, let's go and get some eyes on and see.
I really, I really just want to be asked a few things, I was mentioning, so, um, with, okay. Yeah, and just to see what kind of options we might have, it sounds like, you've given us some direction as far as contacting the emergency fires. Very, it's gonna have some impact on, on the next decision too, um, and also, um, you know, type of stone, really consider. The width, you know, you can, you can take another look at that and, and talk to the applicant about that too.
Alright, okay. Uh, the, uh, request.
Yeah, you, he could throw that out if he wants to.
I'll throw it out as the.
Yeah.
Then anything else you want to.
No, yeah, he covered the one that I did, and I think the rest are. They're more straightforward. County comments are.
Just, yeah, just do the basic information, I can. What's that? It's not going on to, um.
I understand, but it was ninety-eight in my period.
Oh, okay, this is just, this is from Michelle. Um, she said, um. Just a reminder that if this plan is not going to the VOS in July, the developer must provide a time extension letter for the board of supervisors to render a decision. Last month. Yeah.
So this time.
So we, so, just for record, key purposes, if you don't accept it within thirty days, then it deemed accepted within thirty days from the middle. So that should be noted in the minutes, so we know what date we're going on, but this other wide company has this minute, these minutes, it can be accepted for review on that.
On that day, yes.
The date of May twenty-fifth, because of when it was submitted, when the clock started, you didn't have it in thirty days, the clock started on that thirty.
Yeah, we got it on the fourth of May. So, yeah, okay.
Well, if we got it, now, then we accepted it within the amount of time it had acceptance, and the acceptance starts on May twenty-fifth.
Right.
So we don't.
I don't think you do, but if you're willing to give one, and we'll worry about it, but it's fine, I mean.
Can just wait till, till next month, I mean, I don't think we're gonna be back, I think we have to get PennDOT sorted out, before we probably come back. I'm running a new.
Yeah, you're not gonna be.
So.
So.
Otherwise. So the official place admission date's gonna be five twenty-five, right?
Yeah.
And then, maybe we'll just go, I can put a specific date on there for into this, alright, so if I just. Maybe make it the end of September, at least for now, but, okay.
Today is the twenty. Today's the twenty-second.
Now.
Get pulled up, and out here in the meeting, no one's seen, so, hey, this will, and then run out of time, and. You can see that too.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be great, yeah, I'll do that. Did we make a motion?
Let's finish this, okay, so we need, uh, a motion, it could be the table, it's whatever.
I make a motion to the table.
Okay, motion table, wait a second, second. And second, any comments or questions, all in favor, aye, opposed, okay, so, so you, next month, or?
Yeah.
Honestly, do you get. This is an example of, what you zone, I think, you got, huh? No, it's, what, what you zone it, it will be on, that's exactly, this is a prime example of that, from, you know, it's, if, uh, you know, if it was residential site.
Right.
Um, but that, you know, with the Marshall C one, this very, and there's, there's gonna be more, some of the isolated ones that are along those wetlands, that are, that are difficult to make. Easy, but it's what it is.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, even with the, the access, even if we're talking about it set up for residential use, but it's a commercial zone property, correct? And they don't have their own, you know, the way to their own access, other than that coming to these, right, it's different than years ago, just if you did, if it were a current subdivision, it would be a, it would have been going in there. Or, you know, proper setbacks in wetlands and whatever, so would be.
Mm-hmm.
With. Yeah, I didn't want to, you see that, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Other reviews, we finalize to an audit, okay?
Thank you.
I got it, where I should, I'm missing one, I was thinking more, it's gonna be a phase with the regional planning.
Alright, well, um, I guess we had our first, uh, meeting. All right, well, um, I guess we had our first, uh, meeting, even though it wasn't formal, with the Economic Development Committee. Not a lot went on, except that we kind of, uh, we got a feel that when in the process of how it's gonna be happening. And, uh, the roles of, uh, one committee versus the other. And I believe we have a. Plan. For our next, then, I believe the supervisor sent out. Somebody sent out something about a date for our next meeting, but I'm not, I'm not sure who. Anything submitted yet?
Um, people have been following plans to that. So, so next week, the Economic Development Committee is going to Canada, up and down, two women on with. Uh, and, and see the particularly ass project. We've gotten calls from things like, I have really inefficient windows in my store, so I want to change them to double-faced, instead of single-faced. But the effect, the two or nine, it may be very little, replacing, you're not replacing cracked or. Collapitated and changes with, with that, somebody else called for solar panel. Someone else called for something, uh, like dumpster to the back, and, you know, so it's, it's not something so far that's been, um. Very visible, you know, two or nine, but it's, it's, it's their calling, because with some of these properties, people have it another way.
Is there formal application?
Yes, there is, there is. Captain, is there money at that all? Yes, ma'am, uh, we can get the thousand dollars. And maximum size of the project is twenty thousand dollars, so one of the good questions we got is. You know, why, why, uh, you know, if it's a matching brand, I put up ten and the town puts up ten. You know, what if I have a fifty thousand dollar project, and I'm gonna put up forty? And the answer is, uh, because it's the town, there's not, uh. A chamber of commerce or another entity doing it, um, you'd have to go in prevailing ways, you'd have to. Go into all the things, bigs, you have to have a big, uh, uh. Box that I can play, all the things the parents would have to go through for a project that, that over there. Maybe possible way you're merging this.
Oh, so, not, not of the taxpayer dollar requirement to township, it's going into it.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great, awesome. Any questions on that? No, good, thank you, regional planning. So, regional planning.
Yeah, do you want to, why is it up?
You're doing so well.
So, um, we had a meeting with Mills Smithfield, Smithfield, uh, Price, and East Stratford Borough. And the idea was to have a regional planning commission group, just like Seeger. Which is Tetham Hill, Backton, uh, Eldred.
Ross.
Uh, yeah, Ross. He knows, yeah, and, uh, and he's the thing.
Hope.
Hope, there you go. So, and the advantages of a regional planning commission is that you'll, although you'll care of one comprehensive plan. Uh, you, you still need to check with your identity and your individuality with your own zoning. Uh, and your own value and all of those things, but, um, the advantage would be. You could plan as a region where you would want something like a solar field or a warehouse or. So Price County, for example, who sort of said, well, we're not much like, uh, Mills Smithfield, they're more like Barrett. We don't wanna, you know, do this, but the advantage to them to do it would be that if they wanted to make their own partnership. Conservation, they could do so, because we there, the other districts for them, the other township here, there's other district for them. So that's one advantage, another advantage is, um, you, you qualify for more grants. You qualify for more planning dollars, both from the county and the community. So we had a meeting with the other township, some saw the advantage, some were not so sure around it, and then we'll do our goals.
Was it, did you cover it, this is just early discussion on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because they all said no, there, we, you know, we just left fire though.
The counties suggested that several times. But the rest of the town, we've covered it, I would be a plant.
Correct.
Except for eastern part of Phoenix, so.
And then there was, and then there was Barrett and Paradise, who were not covered. Um, but they, they were, are kind of like Price, they just, they can't see the eye to eye on something, so. So, yeah, the entire county is, is set for us. Anything to add, Mark?
No. It would come to the next. It would come to the next meeting, huh?
I mean, with, with. Any groups, you, you, you gain and you give up, I mean, there's, there's both there, so. County Township and Jackson Township. They had, they were very motivated to cooperate together, uh, because of. Uh, uh. Developing one, uh, six eleven and adult uses and everything, it was critical that they. Combined and by doing that, they allowed them to, to take three townships. And, and then. Take one spot for adult use, and I was, they were able to satisfy that zone, so. Not a perfect world, just something.
The biggest help would be the, uh, the warehouses. And they're ugly, and they're eating up town butt places, and we need a place. To put them where they're not going to be like the statue, I mean, literally, like. Uh, going down to Philly yesterday, literally, they're putting warehouses right next to apartment buildings and people's homes. And that is horrible, and they're not attractive, and they're growing like crazy, and then they get empty. When the business is not there, then you've got this big building, what are you gonna do with it, which is some of the classes that I've taken on in. State, what do you do, try to turn them into apartments or something that's useful? Because now you've got this, they've been sitting in your, not, you know, in your, in your town. So, if, if we can all get together and work on how we're going to situate this when the problem comes up, it would work better for all of you.
All right, thank you. Eric, you're up again.
Penn State. Penn State is on vacation. Uh, there is, uh, on the twenty-eighth, there is a seminar that they're supposed to be giving, I think it starts to. Uh, we haven't been able to get into the registration form, Vicki tried, I tried, so we've got it. I have something in the morning, but if, if it's, uh, available, then it's worthwhile, I have, I have money signing it for. And township wants to pay for it. So Vicki and I are gonna look into that.
Yeah.
Thank you, just a public here for comments, so that meeting is July twenty-seventh, question to a jar.
Happy birthday, Mark.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Close to.
Everyone. And everyone, Keith.
Oh, congratulations, awesome.
So, Nick and I. Uh, Bob, Nick and I are gonna drive back there, because I'm not going back there by myself.
All right.
Okay.
I'm not going home.
The other day, I just didn't want to go there by myself. Thank you, yeah, we're going to that registration, yeah, yes, I'll do the talk. Exactly, because it's not like, everybody jumps on the truck, everybody goes down. Have a good night. Yeah, you're right.